Yeah, I'm in an exit before you ask that much.
Like to call to order the September fourteenth meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilor is Klein.
Your Honor, customers, we're kind of getting his Zoom app opened up right now. He'll be joining us in just a moment.
Very well.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michael and Annie.
There.
Very good. If you all would rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move for a walk.
Second.
A motion of second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's like sign, the agenda is approved. Next, we have our citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for a citizen to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone in the chambers or online who'd like to address this on something that is not on the agenda? And while Pete is checking, just remind everyone that we follow the pillars of character counts. Endeavoring at all times to model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. So in conducting our business, we expect everyone to act in a respectful manner following this. Pete, do we have anyone online?
No, you are.
And no one here, so we'll move on to consent.
Move resolution.
Second.
Motion of second on consent for discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post?
I'm going to have to say it verbally until I can get logged in. I'm having trouble with my password. So, yes.
So consent passes by a vote of five to zero. Our first action item is a resolution on the Third Amendment to zoning change agreement in Shadow Creek North.
This one, as you recall, was previously discussed and tabled. At this particular point, the applicant has withdrawn their request. So there'd be no additional action necessary tonight.
Then let the record reflect that the matter has been withdrawn by the property owners and therefore there is no action to be taken. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Third consideration of ordinance eleven forty. Catherine.
All right, just a quick reminder. This is a consideration that has been before you before that is permitting approximately twenty feet of a single-family detached dwelling unit to be constructed at a twenty-five-foot rear yard setback. And that twenty feet is measured linearly across the plane of the dwellings for your facade. We have not received any additional or new comments, and there have not been any changes since the last council meeting, and staff recommends approval of ordinance eleven forty regarding rear yard setbacks.
Questions for Catherine? Go ahead.
I'll move that ordinance number one one four zero be considered placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion second on the ordinance. Is there further discussion or anyone in the chamber to address this issue? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that?
Yes.
Took my only job tonight, Weaver. And that passes by a vote of five to zero, or December eleven forty is declared to have been enacted.
Your Honor, Councilman Klein is now in the meeting.
Very good. Now, next we have another resolution, Catherine.
So our applicant is Berkshire Office LLC, and they are currently requesting an approval of a covenant amendment for the Berkshire Commons Office Park Plats one and two. If approved, this would modify language related to the required exterior materials and allow a modest increase in the maximum permitted building square footage from ten thousand square feet to twenty, sorry, to twelve thousand five hundred square feet. And that size allowance only pertains to five of the lots that support two-story walkout construction. Let's see, the inserted language that they are proposing states as follows. Starting at the beginning of the section, it says eighty percent of non-glazed wall area shall be masonry, in which they have in addition, they'd like to add or alternative modern building materials included but not limited to stone or other durable and commercially acceptable building product approved by the city of Clive, Iowa. Under the city's current development standards manual, the acceptable materials to make up the eighty percent masonry would be full-depth brick or natural stone. And the proposed language for the covenant change would not automatically allow other materials to be used to make up that eighty percent of masonry. And Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval at their September seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Unstaffed currently recommends approval for the First Amendment to the Second amended Declaration of Easements, Restrictions, and Covenants for Berkshire Commons Office Park.
Thank you. Questions for Catherine?
Yeah, just real quick. Do we expect, you know, it says that if they want to use something other than that masonry or, you know, brick or stone, that you'd have to get approval from, you know, your office?
Correct.
Do you expect that to be a pretty, pretty easy thing, or is there going to be more admin work?
I would not suggest that that would be something very easy to do. Currently, the development standards manual essentially only allows full-depth brick and stone for that eighty percent. However, we are working on updates to the development standards manual. One of those sections is architecture, in which case we believe that there needs to be more guidance for what we allow as architecture. And so that will be coming to the council soon. But generally, the eighty percent still remains brick and stone.
Doug, would you like to elaborate further?
Yes, and I just want to make sure that we're all clear when we're talking about this. The final decision is yours.
Okay.
City Council will make the determination as part of the approval of any site plan that's submitted. So this would be the guidance that staff would use, developer would use, but ultimately, as is the case with any requests for construction of commercial buildings, you all had the final decision.
But I do want to make sure that we're not increasing your workload by variances in the site plan, that you're going to be obviously speaking to those, you know, developers out there.
I know. In this particular case, the design standard doesn't create an additional burden. We're already going to go through the process of evaluating the character and material composition of any building.
Thanks. Other questions?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused what this opens it up to, right, and why? Seems pretty vague, broad. And so it does put a position to the council of the one-offs or the future and the precedent. And I mean, we have a standard, we have a standard. Why do we open it up with such a broad stroke?
Sure. So we love that. Essentially, their current wording only allows for masonry, where our allowances allow for masonry and stone. So essentially, this is relaxing their covenant while still meeting our intent and design standards.
Good answer.
Yep. Be better than that.
I wrote it down. I suspected someone would ask.
I like it.
Thank you.
Other, other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion on the resolution.
Wait, all right. Move resolution approving the First Amendment to the Second Amendment Declaration of Easements, Restrictions, and Covenants for Berkshire Commons Office Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, counsel.
Doug, looks like we've got a public hearing to set.
Thank you. Yes, what's before you is a simple action to establish a public hearing for consideration of a zoning change for this particular property, one one zero four zero Hickman Road. The only reason that it's on the main agenda instead of typically how we would set these on consent is that this particular project is a little bit unique in terms of its zoning request. The process isn't any different than zoning hearings that you've had in the past. It's just that this is a proposed rezoning to accommodate multifamily residential within a commercial district. So it'd be similar to the application that you reviewed about two years ago with the Sterling Inn on Forest Avenue being converted from a hotel, extended stay hotel, to a multifamily residential. In this particular case, we have the same developer from that project has put this property under contract and is requesting the city consider rezoning it to accommodate the multifamily residential uses in the property itself. The applicant has obtained more than fifty percent consent from the surrounding property owners, as you see from the exhibits. He has obtained the requisite petition and consents to bring this, bring this forward to you folks. So at this time, we're simply establishing a date for a public hearing in October. And in that intervening time, it would be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Developers online. Not that this is a public hearing or debate on the project merits itself, but if there are any questions or any comments before we get into the detailed review and consideration by P and Z, and then ultimately back to you folks for public hearing, we're certainly open to address those questions that you might have.
Any questions for Doug or the developer this evening? Otherwise, we're just looking for resolutions set to public here.
I'll move resolution to set public hearing.
Second.
Motion of second to set a public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, would the council please vote?
Yes.
And will clerk please post that vote? That public hearing is set by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Little Walnut Creek.
Thank you, Your Honor. So tonight, we have the council's actions, or our donor agreement with Polk County. As noted in the packet, Polk County is contributing an additional four hundred thousand dollars to our Little Walnut Creek restoration project, with two hundred thousand of that to be used on the east side of Alice's Road and another two hundred thousand to be used on the west side. One of the reasons that they were very happy to support this project is not just because of the water quality protections that will be achieved by stabilizing banks, but it also really connects those corridors moving from Waki east into Urban Dale and through Clive.
Very good. Questions for Pete or comments?
I will note, Your Honor, that this investment by Polk County is actually in the Dallas County portion of Clive, but they recognize that the waters that flow a little Walnut Creek flow into Walnut Creek ultimately into Polk County, but I think it's important to note that for this particular investment.
Good point, good point. Yeah, what we're looking for here is
Move the resolution approving donor agreement, Polk County Green Belt Landing improvement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Continue, Polk County, Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor. So using the similar pot of money from the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA, that came down from Washington, Polk County is making another contribution, this time for Little Walnut Creek, excuse me, for Green Belt Landing. It complements an earlier one hundred thousand dollar commitment that they had already made, now bringing their total investment in Green Belt Landing up to six hundred thousand dollars, which is incredibly generous. With those donations, they will have options for their naming rights that they'd like to pick up. Festival grounds was what the initial hundred thousand dollar donation was going to go toward. That would have given them the naming rights to the festival grounds. With this additional five hundred thousand, they can also have the naming rights to the Wetland Walk, which is one of the primary amenities that is going in here as part of this larger project. So we look forward to that conversation with Polk County. We want to make sure that we give them great recognition and also do it in a way that aligns with the reasons why they're also investing in Clive at this time.
If I could add, Your Honor, too, I was able to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting where both of these items were considered last week and was sure to share with our supervisors all the ones that I could catch after the meeting, how much we appreciate their investment in our projects. And again, these ARPA funds are targeted towards water quality elements of both of these projects, since the Wetland Walkway designation. And so just again, really excited to see them to continue to invest in this project, and I was sure to share with them the appreciation that we had in those investments. And also, as we look at Green Belt Landing more broadly, something that I just wanted to bring up now, since we have a Green Belt Landing item, is as we get into this project, and now we're further starting to walk down the path on site plan and starting to develop some construction drawings, Richard and I have had a conversation here with the design team and a few other folks about the project delivery associated with Green Belt Landing. And with the complexity of the components of the project in terms of community building, stage, all the stormwater, wetland infrastructure, parking lots, just a lot of various elements to this project, and with the numerous different funding sources, whether it's federal, state, county, private philanthropy through donation, and then our own funds. I, we are in the process and will be initiating an RFP process to seek a construction manager as agent for this project. Originally, as we started off, we thought this would be more of your traditional design bid build, but as we get into the complexity, especially the federal dollar complexity that comes along in the reporting requirements that come along with particularly those EPA dollars of the half a million that was also going towards the Wetland Walkway or the constructed wetland area. Just feel in terms of the city getting the best product in the end, that we wanted to go the construction manager route, knowing that we've had good success with a large project that had a different kind of complexity entirely of facility with public safety, but knowing that this is, you know, ten-plus-million-dollar project, and then we have the variety component right in the middle with the playground and the in-kind donation. They're going to be doing that, and a lot of coordination that's going to need to happen between trades and contractors with this particular project. So we've put together a draft RFP for the construction manager as agent services and are looking to distribute that tomorrow. And then work with the design team and do interview process and then bring back a contract for you all. We're at a, at a good time in the, in the process here for us to also get the value in the design process in terms of the value engineering that a construction manager can bring to the table and start to help us as we go into the fall and winter here, putting the bid packages together. Similar to how we did with public safety, where we, they kind of crafted how the ten or eleven packages in that case were put together to garner the, the most competition we could in terms of the different bid elements. So if the council's comfortable with that approach, that's something that just over the last, you know, three to four weeks, we've been wrestling with, and now that we're layering on all this, these great funding options, and this Polk County is another, another great one to layer on here. Tonight, we just felt that that was going to be the best way, again, to get the best product for the city in terms of end delivery of the project. So I wanted to kind of add that on to this. I know it's not related to specific action, but mentioned that as we were talking about Green Belt Landing. Happy to take any questions, Your Honor.
Move resolution approving donor agreement of Polk County for Green Belt Landing improvements.
Second. Motion of second on the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote?
Yes.
And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up is our strategic plan.
All right. Well, you just acted on a couple items that are top priorities on your strategic plan as you voted on in August. So what's in the packet are the final materials from that effort in August with all the workshops with Lyle Summick. And have that here for kind of formal update to the strategic plan for the coming twelve to eighteen months work plan for the staff. And we will be reporting back to you on the progress on these items. Of course, a number of these items will be brought forward to you for action. Already kind of put our little tracking sheets together for all the actions. I will share that with you all tomorrow, and then we'll be providing regular quarterly updates on all of those action items, whether it's the policy agenda management, agenda management in progress, major projects. So your action here tonight is to formally update the plan. We will update the website and do the appropriate communications through the city newsletter on the top and high priorities of this council for the community for the next year. Happy to take any questions, Your Honor.
Good. Safe to say, there's been no significant changes that we should be aware of.
Nope. This is just memorializing your votes and your discussions from August.
Move resolution.
Second. Motion of second. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the council please vote?
Yes.
And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Pete will turn to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So happy to report that Clive has received two Voice of the People awards for excellence, best in the country. First one for natural environment and the other one for health and wellness. These are, this is the award that we get periodically based on our resident survey results. City gets compared to other communities that have asked those questions or that battery of questions, and the cities that perform the best are invited to submit applications. And then they select the winners. And so Matt will be at the ICMA annual meeting in Austin later on this fall, and he will receive those awards and then bring them back to Clive.
And just underscore, it was the best in the country.
Of all of the communities that use the survey tool, yeah, but it is communities from all across the country.
Is there one winner, or do they have like five top best, or how does that work?
I'm not sure. They have an overall winner. They break them up into categories based on facets of livability. So you'll remember that chart that I've used a couple of times that shows importance that people place on a, on a facet of livability and then the quality, and you want to be in that top right quadrant. It's where a lot of our results put us when you took sort of the aggregate of a set of questions that are related to wellness or a set of questions related to natural environment. It worked out that we are the best in the country this year, or this, most recent two years for natural environment and health and wellness.
So basically, they just know what we already know.
They're catching up. They're catching up.
They're fine.
We're in week two of our soil quality restoration installations across the city. You may have started to hear from some constituents. Julia has done a wonderful job getting information out to residents. They know what to expect. And A plus has done a nice job early on with, I think, their customer relations. Everybody has some different expectations when you're working in their front yard, and the A plus team has been there and been responsive, and they, as we received a couple emails from folks who had some concerns about how affected, how much compost went down. As soon as we heard that, we passed the one A plus, and they were right back out there to take a look, and in many cases, buy more compost. So it's been a good start. Now they even put in some time on Saturday, it's past Saturday, because they lost a day when it was really hot right after Labor Day. So encouraged, and I feel like we're on track to get all these knocked out in September.
Good deal. Anything else?
No, Your Honor. Speak up.
Real quick on DART. So we, the commission did approve the first phase for construction of the facility, which is fully funded. There's no debt servicing required for that. But there was a discussion about potentially, you know, depending on how some of these grant programs are working out and how competitive they're getting, you know, potentially looking at some debt servicing for phase three, that's still a ways out. We, you know, there is, that's not set by any means, and there are a number of commissioners that have concerns with that, myself included. But that, at least that phase one will start fairly, excuse me, fairly soon, and the idea is that that will make Dart more competitive for those subsequent grants for phase two and phase three. One thing that the commission did talk about is we don't necessarily want to, we don't want to plan for this, but we need to be prepared with a, with a backup plan, I guess, of plans B or C or whatever you want to call it. What happens if we don't get fully funded in the next round? So how do we continue to progress forward with what, you know, we are able to, to get funding-wise? One of the other things that's coming up is we're getting very close to having to make a decision on service levels. Des Moines has not made a decision yet on the franchise fee that was allowed under the new, the new statute. And we're getting very quickly, we're getting to the point where we need to set a budget. And if, if Des Moines hasn't indicated that they're going to, you know, take advantage of that franchise fee, we've got to set a budget. Well, that's part of the discussion that's going to be coming in September. Do we set a budget, hoping that they do? Which to me seems reckless, maybe, might be, maybe too strong of a word, but I have concerns with that. But then the other option is we, we set a conservative budget, which means you have to start talking about service level cuts. At which point, you know, that's a whole nother discussion, and that'll require, you know, a lot of outward comms, a lot of notice and public hearings as well. So timeline-wise, we're essentially looking at January is kind of the, I don't know if I call it a dead-by date, but that's, that's kind of the deadline that if Des Moines hasn't made a decision by then or indicated where they're headed, at least we may be stuck with the, with a service cut at that point. And the service cuts would, would go into effect. If that was the case, they would go into effect about a year, a year after now, basically. So November of twenty twenty-four is when service cuts would take effect, essentially. So, more to come.
Thanks. Anything else?
Nope, I think that's it. All right. We have our meeting with the CEO tomorrow. Sorry, yeah. We, we do. Amanda. Yep, yep.
Good luck. Dead.
Okay, MPO exec met yesterday. It was a very mundane and uneventful meeting, so I'm happy to report we're back to normal. The RFP for the executive director should be issued soon. It, well, you know, to hire the search firm that will, will lead that. We are going to be keeping that more of a local-regional approach. Not that we won't accept a national candidate, but the search itself will be focused locally and regionally. And so we're going to be sending out an RFP to hire that search firm here very soon.
Pretty good. Anything else?
That's it.
Eric, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, a couple of things, Mayor. One, several ribbon cuttings for new businesses in Clive, Seven Brew, and BMO Bank. Also wanted to alert the council that the Catch Des Moines Celebration is going to be next Wednesday, September twentieth, from quarter to six thirty. Unfortunately, I'll be in beautiful Fargo, North Dakota, so if anyone would like to attend, they're certainly welcome and invited. Also, Mayor and I attended the latest MAC meeting where we got a great presentation from Hannah Inman regarding the Icon Water Trails. Things seem to be progressing nicely. That's all.
Thank you, Eric. Susan?
The Bravo Board has welcomed some new public members onto the board. This is the time of year when that happens. I enjoyed attending a meeting along with Matt and Pete with the representative of Zach Nun's office, Tony Chavez, who is very specifically dedicated to assisting with grant opportunities. And he explained they use the Congressional Research Service, which only a member of Congress can tap into. And it seems a very good opportunity for us to take advantage of. So that's it.
Michael?
Do you have nothing to that?
Do you want to update us on?
Tonight? No.
Okay. Never mind. Counsel.
No report, Your Honor.
Matthew.
Your Honor, I have a few items tonight. So at your seats and Councilmember Klein, I'll have my, yours and your, my office for when you can pick it up. So these swag bags are things that we now give out to new hires when they join the Clive team. And here recently, we received our new rating from our workers' comp insurer, and it was a mod factor of zero point five nine, which zero point five eight is the absolute lowest that you can get, so extremely low. And that saves the city over three hundred thousand dollars in workers' comp insurance premiums because of that. So as a thank you to our employees and to all of you, we have decided that all the staff are going to get these swag bags. And we're going to be adding a little kind of for, for being safe postcard on to these as we give them out to the staff as a thanks and a little bit of twenty-five dollars extra in the overall Clive store that we've created for them to get an additional gear to put in this Clive store. So that'll go in everybody's account. But it's just a little gesture for us to say thanks to, to our staff for being But it's just a little gesture for us to say thanks to our staff for being safe. And that's showing up in real dollars for our taxpayers in terms of our workers' comp premium. So these are for you for tonight, for each of you. And those are, each swag bag has a water bottle, a coffee tumbler, a notebook, and a pen that goes along with the lunch bag. So we'll be handing those out here as we get the big order in for all the bags over the next month here and distributing them out to all the facilities. So again, want to really share that appreciation to our staff for being safe in the workplace. Also, as I was discussing earlier with the construction manager, we'll be moving forward with that tomorrow. We're also working on getting started on a number of other strategic planning projects, starting to have discussions additionally on the City Hall Library Facility and what that may look like from a construction management standpoint. So those are things that are in motion. But the Green Belt Landing one is our priority right now because of the timing. We need to turn that one around fairly quickly. And hopefully by the end of October, your second meeting in October, no later than your first meeting in November, have something back to you on that in terms of that construction manager. And we have a list ready to distribute that RFP, too. Also wanted to kind of confirm with the council. So I shared with you all Mercy One Des Moines' decision to no longer continue the advertising lease on the Water Tower, 128th Street Water Tower. That was a unique setup, if you will, due to the Mercy Wellness Campus a number of years ago. They have decided to end their advertising lease early at five years. They had about five years left on the agreement that allocated approximately $50,000 to the city, which number of about 5,000 of that went into the city's formal operating budget to support the Clive Festival. The other 45 went either to public art, our capital program for public art, or two $10,000 donations that went to the Clive Community Foundation to supplement our Green Belt Maintenance Endowment and our Public Art Endowment that the city has established with the Clive Community Foundation. Of course, those funds, we received our last payment basically for this fiscal year. This will be that last year, and we will not have that payment going forward. However, Mercy is also on the hook for painting over their logo, the costs associated with painting over their logo on the tower. So our public work staff is looking into that, what those costs may be. And we're trying to determine, too, where we're at timing-wise for our own kind of refresh of the upper bowl paint-wise. But if it's still a number of years off, we will move forward with just covering over the logo. The reason I bring this up tonight is that was kind of a unique situation. Wanted to get a sense from council. Is that ever something that we would entertain in the future, knowing that that was related to that specific campus, where the tower is located? Of course, Mercy continues to have a presence in that campus. Whether we would want to continue to look at advertising opportunities, that was kind of a rare, one of first, kind of a first-time thing for any community in Iowa that I was aware of doing that. So I wanted to see, again, reactions, thoughts. Don't have to make a decision right now, but it's just something that I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on.
Eric?
Yeah, a quick question, Matt. Thanks for the update on that. And that indeed was a unique relationship. And I think mutually advantageous to both Mercy and the city of Clive. Did they give you any kind of indication of why they wanted to get out of the agreement early? And is there any kind of a penalty for early withdrawal from this arrangement?
There, I'll answer your second question first. There is no penalty. They had to wait five years before they could consider withdrawal. The only penalty is they have to pay for the painting over of the logo. I would say that this is a cost-cutting measure. Mercy continues to have challenges in terms of where costs are going for expenses and revenues in the healthcare space. And this is one of many cost-cutting measures that they have been looking at and just made sense for them at this time.
Thank you.
Other questions for Matt? Yeah, Ted?
Well, I'll just make a comment. I would want us to be very careful in who, if we were to get into another sponsorship type of agreement, whatever goes up there becomes part of our identity. And so we just need to be really careful in who we kind of hitch that wagon to. Like you said, Mercy was unique. We're kind of known for health and wellness, and so it made sense from that perspective. But I could envision a lot of things that might not be quite as appropriate. So I would be very, very careful in how we approach that.
I agree with what you're saying, Ted, but I do think, I mean, I think it's something where I think we could find another partner within the city to do something like that. So, I mean, to your point, I don't think we want to rush into the first one that offers us a pot of money, but I think we could find somebody.
If it makes sense, then I would be okay with it.
Yeah, I'd agree. I would be open to finding another partner as long as it's the right partner.
My sense is, is not necessarily something we're advertising at the moment. We obviously have, they still have another year. They've made their payment, so they have it through June 30th of 2024. And then after that point is when we can paint over the logo. And again, not necessarily broadcasting it, but if the right opportunity and partnership comes along, something that the council's willing to consider. Is that a fair summary of that? Okay, thank you. Also, one thing I wanted to circle back on related to the Stonegate Playground Fire. Something unique that has come up related to our insurer, ICAP, our insurance company, is we have a provision in our policy that provides for when a circumstance like this happens, when it's arson, you know, related, that we could, without any deductible cost, actually provide a reward, up to a $10,000 reward for information leading up to who may have, who would have done the fire. So it's kind of something new. We haven't really, we actually weren't even, until Matthew founded our policy, weren't even aware that that existed. It is no additional cost to the city, but it's something that ICAP offers to ensure when it's a public piece that's insured by them that we could seek a reward. And we've had a good dialogue at a staff level, pros and cons on both sides, but I think we're leaning more on the pro side. But before we move forward with that, just wanted to have a kind of temperature check with you all, if you would be comfortable with that, actually us publicizing that, making it known. And then I'll have some other items related to Stonegate that I'll bring up in a minute.
To me, it seems like a no-brainer. What's the cons? I mean, you said pros and cons. What are the cons?
It, you know, it's been almost a month, not quite a month, since it's happened. And, you know, when you mention the reward, does it kind of bring up the negative sides of that fire again? Again, I think the pros outweigh the cons, but we had at least a good dialogue to make sure we were seeing the whole picture. You know, depending on, again, I think one thing we were also cognizant of, if it's, you know, a juvenile, you know, there's just some things that we wanted to be cognizant of, if that was the, you know, who may have done it. So.
And I can tell you that neighborhood over there is very aware of it, and they're very eager to see it solved.
I think there seems to be consensus.
Yeah, from my perspective, this is something we did discuss, Matt, a reward for this, and this seems to be that ICAP will fund this. You know, a strong indication that this is supporting of the neighborhood and also a real inhibitor for future actions like this, arson and vandalism to happen in the future. So I'm strongly in favor of it.
I think it's okay as you spin it, right? A month has gone by with no solid leads. We're going to put 10,000 out now.
Right. That was another thing that we were thinking about is that it is, it's still a little cold yet in terms of us finding something. Related to Stonegate, the playground itself, this next council meeting, Richard will be coming back to you all with, we were looking at some concepts of what it looks like to do a full update to the park, not just the playground and what the costs are. And we've also, as I've shared with the council, had some entities reach out about potential fundraisers related to that, that we would want to pursue. We did have updating, a full update to that playground about three, it was about three or four years out in the CEP on our regular playground reinvestment schedule anyway. So it would be a matter of moving, kind of flip-flopping and moving those up. But we're going to have a presentation for you at your next meeting to show you kind of what we were thinking in terms of concept for that full playground update. We'll have about $100,000 in insurance coming our way to support that. So we'll have a full update. This is also an opportunity then to convert the mulch surface to the rubberized surface, you know, kind of what we're doing with all of our modern playgrounds. But Richard will have a presentation on that, so that's coming. And then pending that, kind of your direction on where we're headed there, then we were going to communicate with the neighborhood on what the plan is going forward.
Matt, if I could just add a clarifying point. Councilman, Matthew, make sure I have this right, too. The max award amount that'd be covered by our policy is $10,000, but we haven't decided, made any decision about the size of the reward at this point.
Yeah, because you might want to start out a little lower and then increase over time if it still remains cold.
10 is the max. The last item I had is, just I know, and I was going to mention strategic planning item, and I forgot, but I know we had to appreciate the council's feedback on rescheduling, looking at rescheduling in October, your governance session. So the strategic planning isn't quite complete. We still have that item left, and it's looking like Monday, October 16th. But again, I know I want to confirm schedules with a few more of you before we lock that in. Again, he was going to be here anyway because of the work he's doing with the city of Grimes, and so we were just kind of adding on to that. There is also the option, if the council wants to, we could keep the original date. We would just have him on Zoom as the facilitator. I know Councilmember Klein will have to participate via Zoom if we move it to 1016, so don't know if there's any preference either way, but happy to accommodate and appreciate the council's flexibility on schedule there.
Anything else?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Speaking of the vandalism, is there a concern about the release of the goats and the hooking of the wires and things that are happening there?
We've had a few instances here recently of the goats getting out and some folks, somebody messing with the fencing. So that is definitely something we have dealt with and appreciate our residents who call it in. In some cases, helped herd the goats for us with park staff and a police officer on occasion. So, yeah, we have had some more frequency of that here recently.
Have we put out show cams and... Easy, right? Show cams, move out of them. Let's put them out.
Yeah, we haven't today, but that's definitely something we can look at as we move them around.
You're answered everything as cameras, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Set for traffic.
God, in your backyard.
Anything else on that?
Say, Your Honor.
Just a reminder that we'll have a civility session, Civility in Campaigns, Tuesday, 7:30 a.m. at Drake. I think Matt has sent out information, probably could send out more reminder on Friday. But we would encourage your tenants, if you're available, we select at 7:30 a.m. knowing that if you're involved in a campaign, you're going to be busy in the evenings, but probably not at 7:30 a.m.
Is it the same place as it was last time?
So we'd encourage that. The Register probably will have a...
Still business?
They're still in Des Moines, right?
Des Moines, yes, yes.
You can Google my name and see an essay concerning civility that Mayor Andowig and I submitted. It'll be in print probably in a few days, but it's online right now if you care to take a look at that. So just wanted to mention that and remind you about the Tuesday session. Do we have any correspondence? Anything else for the good of the order this evening? If not, we'll stand adjourned at 6:43.